Okay, so we'll start this public caucus. Tonight, we have with us representatives from ANZOR Advisory, Desi Navarro, Corey Burbach, and David Jehoshki. And then also Executive Director of OECD for the City, Eileen Cipriani, to go over where we're at in terms of our ARPA funding and that program. So the floor is yours.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Well, good evening. Thanks for having us here. We are here to present to you an overview of where we are at to date regarding the efforts of our team and city staff as it relates to the American Rescue Plan project. So if we can go ahead into the next slide. I have a few items that we wanted to walk through with you this evening. I'm going to start us off and then turn things over to Corey and then to Desi. We've left some time at the end to answer questions if you have any. If you have questions, please interject during the discussion. We'd like to make this more of a discussion rather than a lecture on our side. So again, thank you for having us here this evening if we can go. So we'd always like to start in terms from a context perspective and just want to read this to you is that, you know, we're looking to provide an overview of the ARPA program work done to date and to receive input from the public and council on the top priority projects identified on the American Program List, which we will provide to you. Really, it's important, we want to establish a baseline. Really, this is a plan at the end of the day and it's really today is to talk about the baseline projects with the understanding that after today, some things may be reprioritized and reshuffled, some things may be added, subtracted to the list. But even when the list is presented to you in final form to take official action on, it still can be amended. This is your plan, this is your priority list, and our goal is to help you implement it. Just in terms of looking at who we have been helping, ANZOR to date has been working with 35 clients nationally, including the city of Scranton. We are helping to help administer over $500 million worth of American Rescue Plan funds. So as you can see, the list in front of you is quite extensive. We're helping cities and counties that have got an allocation of less than $5 million to those that have received over $130 million. So what we like to offer is our insights, best practices that we're seeing in other locations and bringing them here so that way we don't have to reinvent the wheel and we also are able to hit the ground running and really provide what we see as some industry-leading practices. In terms of level-setting, when the rule was initially passed, it was issued as an interim rule and then in January, January 6th, I believe, this year, the final rule came out. And really, what it broke down in terms of categories of really where the American Rescue Plan funds could be spent. So on the presentation in front of you, really what we wanted to do is just to let you know is that there's these five broad categories. In terms of supporting public health expenditures, which you probably saw a lot of what the county was doing and other places were doing during the CARES Act, was really about trying to get out to mitigate the pandemic. There's also a major category of where we see a lot of our clients spending time and effort is addressing negative economic impacts. There's a section called Replaced Lost Public Sector Revenue, and really what this does is it really allows flexibility to local governments to fund projects that may not neatly fit into other categories. There's premium pay category for eligible workers, and then really where we see the bulk of the activity with our clients is spending and focuses on infrastructure. And really, I think the mindset has been with our clients with American Rescue Plan is that this is really more about a prosperity plan and really about setting the foundation for future growth and development and a return on investment to the local community. So when you look at the act itself, there was almost $2 trillion that was in the bill. Within the act itself, it covered many different categories. Within that 1.9 trillion, $365 billion went to state and local governments. It went to all states, all cities, and all counties in the U.S. It's unprecedented in terms of scale. And then when you look at that one step further, what we're really going to do is to talk to you about is the $68.75 million that was allocated to the city of Scranton. Next slide please. So it's important with anything else with the federal government, you know, there's 300-page rule document of what you can do, but there's also some things in terms of what you cannot do. And specifically, there are prohibited expenses that are outlined within the guidance. And while they're not that many, they are important that we want to point out to you. So the items on the list are the eligible items that we have been working with city staff with. But really, when you look at, it really kind of falls into two categories. There are statutory restrictions, meaning the first one is that you can't use the money really to offset a loss in future taxes. And then the second thing is that you can't make any deposits into pension funds, not for normal pay of your personnel, but really to shore up if there's any pension shortfalls, that's prohibited. And then the other area is that you really can't use the money for debt service payments, meaning that if you have loans or other obligations for things that have already been funded, the act is specific that you can't use it for those things. Similar to other types of federal grant programs, settlements or judgments. And then there's some other restrictions there as well. But really, one of the things that we want to point out here is that when you're thinking about other restrictions is that conflicts and conflict of interest is something that comes up, just to kind of keep that in mind, you know, as we look at some of the proposed uses of the funds. So with that, I will turn it over to Corey and have him walk through the other slides.
Well, thank you, Dave, and nice to be back again before you all here tonight. So just want to kind of start by contextualizing a little bit of, oh, thank you, Dave, the overview of the timeline for the American Rescue Plan. So as we know, the city was awarded $68.75 million back in May. And so in addition to some of the key compliance, you know, April 30th deadlines from reporting standpoint, we have, we know as a city that we need to have the funds encumbered by the end of December in 2024, and then those funds need to be expended completely exhausted right now as of December, end of December 2026. So what that means to us and from the contextual purpose, what I'm going to spend a lot of my time talking about is what we've done to date and where we're going to move forward is that right now, if we look at the bottom half of this slide, the city of Scranton is in that first box, that engage requests, analyze, and allocate. And so we have an estimate, a minimum, about another month to two months in that box. And so when we're looking at making sure that we have all of our funds encumbered and expended by 2026, we've looked at some of our key projects and analyzed what the timelines are for us. And so if we look at from our procurement side, design and construction, we're looking at typically a six to 12-month timeline, and then again, for the execution and completion, another minimum of six to 12 months. So by starting in two months, we're already working ourselves into 2024. So that's the impetus for what we've done to date, setting us up for success moving forward, and why there is somewhat of an urgency when it comes to the procurement and completion for our projects.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So on May of 2021, we were awarded $68.75 million. Have we received any portion of that yet?
So we've received our first tranche of funds, we have not received our second tranche of funds, and that can come no more, the second tranche of funds can come no sooner than a year after we received our first tranche of funds.
So my question is, as we get that funding and we almost go through a two-year period before we actually encumber these funds, do we have the ability to invest those funds to earn interest on, or gains on that funding over that two-year period?
So Dave, you want to handle the arbitrage stuff on your end?
So with any type of federal government program, you are allowed to claim a certain portion of interest income. The rule is a little unclear still about how program income will be reported, but program income would be something identified only by the auditors, but it's something that would be reported as part of this program. Still don't have a really good, clear understanding of how that's going to happen, but that's something we can research and get back to you.
Yeah, if you could. And then if we, you know, we invested it somehow to try to earn over the next year and a half, two years, are there restrictions on how that money can be used then, the money that we've earned over that year and a half to two years?
Surely not. It's going to follow the same requirement as the, for the funding that you have received. There's really only two essential rules that they've laid out in the guidance is that they want a plan, basically obligation to obligate the funds and that you know what you're going to do with the money by 2024. And because they understand that you're going to have a significant number of infrastructure-type projects, they provided two additional years until 2026 to, you have to expend all the money. Anything that's not expended by 2026 is subject to revision back to the U.S. Treasury.
Right, okay. I'm just thinking we could actually end up with more than 68.75 if...
You could. I would defer that to, at least the city treasurer, an investment counselor, in terms of what the investment earnings would be. But it is something that we do need to take into account as part of reporting.
Okay, thank you.
I have two quick questions too. In terms of the reporting requirements, just to make sure everyone's aware that we do have to report what every, 30 days after the end of every quarter, what money was expended, you know, to the U.S. Treasury so that they could keep track of that, correct?
Yep, you are correct. And so 30 days, given our tier status and the amount of allocation that we received, were 30 days after every quarter. So we submitted in January, our next report is at the end of April.
Okay. And then also, just in terms of this, you know, broad timeline here, where's the city at in comparison to, you know, other municipalities in terms of how our program is working?
Great question. Do you mind if I answer that on the next slide?
Absolutely.
All right. Took the words right out of my mouth, and I could use you to rent my transitions. So I would, you know, what we wanted to do and is address that exact question because I think what, you know, we don't have the opportunity to be before you all at every meeting, and when you don't see the money being expended, it obviously creates the question of, well, what are we doing? And so I think one of the emphasis in what the city of Scranton has done a great job of is treating this allocation that we recognize as 70% of our annual budget as a true program that needs controls and processes. And so collectively, as a team, what we've done and aided by the fact that the final rule didn't come out till January 6th, we were still in a little bit of a limbo period, is that we've really designated roles, responsibilities, constraints, and then developed a mission and vision for what the American Rescue Plan dollars were going to be used for. And so that way, you know, one of the things I talk about often is we hear as an example, well, if we've ever opened up a sub-recipient or a beneficiary program through the city or a county, it never gets oversubscribed. Well, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't have a control policy in place if it does get oversubscribed, right? We don't want to be looking back after we spent money going, why did we spend it? You know, where did we spend it? And is it in compliance? And so we've set up the infrastructure so regardless of who's sitting down at the table, the American Rescue Plan has, like I said, constraints and guidelines and best practices that moving forward regardless of who's participating or who's actually working at the city. So that was our first step. And then from there, what we did is identified from the mission, what applicable projects have we recognized could be a part of the American Rescue Plan from what the city of Scranton has historically looked at to what's an allowable use under the American Rescue Plan. And that's really where that mission and vision kind of are a driving force in that process because it's easy to get overwhelmed with the amount of money and the amount of opportunities. So it's always a good opportunity for us to look back and say, does that support what we're trying to do to create the greatest and highest impact within the city of Scranton? So from there, we've identified a proposed projects list. And then, as I mentioned earlier, there is an urgency that, you know, we recognize that we need to have the funds expended by 2026. So we looked at the possible first draft of prioritization. So what has longer timelines, what has lower compliance scores in terms of a safer investment in accordance with the final rule? What needs to get started on sooner versus what can wait? And so we set up the infrastructure for how those projects are going to be prepared, maintaining compliance with both the state of Pennsylvania, local policy, and the U.S. Treasury as well. And we're going to cover with some of those projects with you on today's presentation. And again, I mentioned that, you know, the city has done an amazing job of recognizing, to your point, Mr. Cangio, not only do we have the opportunity for investment, we also have other federal dollars that could be used as a value add to this program. And so how do we combine the efficiency and the highest best use of both our CBDG dollars versus what we got compared to what we got with the American Rescue Plan? So we made all the evaluation processes leading up to tonight so that we can move forward with the investment and procurement and then implementation phases. And so, yeah, go ahead.
From a national perspective, what we're seeing is that there's been a bit of a reluctance on cities and counties to actually spend the money because, as Corey pointed out, is that the final rule was issued in January, but it doesn't take effect until actually April 1st. So most of the clients that we have been working with have spent a lot of time using this time for planning purposes, and that's what we're seeing. And from the clients, the 35 clients that we're working with, I would say the city of Scranton is a handful of clients that has a project list that has been developed to the level of detail that you have. You're kind of ahead of where some of our other clients actually are, so you're actually in a very good spot. And not only in terms of the priority and the risk identification, but also, as Corey said, compared to what other types of funding are out there potentially. So it's also, this time has been helpful because it also gives an opportunity to identify all types of projects, not only that can be funded with American Rescue Plan dollars, but really kind of pre-positioning yourself for when the infrastructure bill rules come out, then there may be some things that we can leverage the work that we've already done now to other funding sources in the future.
Now, when I'm looking at this list, like items four through six on the list, creating this list of projects and how they're categorized, is this the draft proposal that I've seen? Is this, is this the draft proposal that I've seen?
I believe so, Eileen. Yeah.
Okay, so you've helped the administration with this proposal.
Yep. So we've supported the administration through that. Obviously, you know, one of the things that we reiterate through this process is we're infrastructure investment, American Rescue Plan experts. We aren't city of Scranton experts, so there's a lot of collaborative effort that goes into identifying what those needs are. So we rely heavily on the city of Scranton for that, run it through the risk and compliance factor scores, and then also looking at highest impact and highest use compared to what we're seeing through across the country with what we should and should not be doing with the American Rescue Plan. But in summary, to answer your question, the city of Scranton is in a great position when it comes to expending the funds and setting up a program. We have experience with folks who are very overwhelmed by the amount of money, and when you don't have controls and processes in place and clear delineation of roles and responsibilities, it can almost be paralyzing to feel comfortable in spending that money. We've also seen the exact opposite. I like to look at it more like a 401K, you're setting up your 401K rather than spending, you know, money that you won in the lottery because we see what happens to a lot of winners, right? So we want to look at it more of an investment strategy, how we return the highest and best use of those dollars. So comparatively, the city of Scranton has done an amazing job pre-positioning themselves to go forward and meet the deadlines, not only on a compliance standpoint, but an infrastructure and completion of program standpoint.
Will you be speaking more to the risk compliance factor scores?
We will, yep.
Okay, thank you.
So want to quickly just kind of recap the definitions or clarity on what project priority means. And really, what that is, is I'll identify the priority one projects as a combination of our low-hanging fruit. What do we understand and realize that has a very high impact within our community from an infrastructure and social benefit perspective, along with having a timeline that probably needs, has more of an expeditious need to get started sooner so that we can complete that project by 2024 from an encumbrance in 2026 standpoint? So from a, and I know I said, we'll touch on the lower compliance versus higher compliance scores on a later slide, but we wanted to really identify where the projects were that we could get going on sooner rather than later so our community can reap the benefits of the American Rescue Plan. From there, we identified a subset of priorities which then align to, or look through feedback based off the compliance score and the community engagement, stakeholder engagement that's been ongoing over the last couple of weeks. So if we slipped in the next slide, just want to jump quickly that, you know, we have had the community, and Eileen, the budget challenge, correct? Yep, the budget challenge. So we've had the budget challenge open, and that's an opportunity for us to solicit feedback, which is a foundation, not a requirement, of the American Rescue Plan, that we engage our stakeholders for participation and awareness to the American Rescue Plan. So we're getting almost 100 responses on the budget challenge, and that's really an opportunity for us to take a temperature check with our stakeholders to say, you know, what we've identified as priorities, does that align necessarily with what they're looking for in their understanding of the American Rescue Plan? And so like I said, we...
What if they don't?
If they don't, it's an opportunity for us to reevaluate. I will say, we've been monitoring the results and feel very good about, you know, where they're coming in from an identification standpoint of the projects that we have on the list. So obviously, the list, the budget challenge closes tentatively on April 4th. So if we get an influx of responses after today's meeting that doesn't align with some of the projects that we've set forth, it's an opportunity for us to reevaluate on those priority two, three, and four projects.
You did say earlier that, you know, this is a plan that's amendable.
Mm-hmm. You said part of it. No, you're good.
You did state that it's amendable, and it's a moving plan that's amendable.
Yep. It's, you know, it's an overused phrase, but it's a living, breathing document, right? 2026 is going to be here before we know it, but we want to allow ourselves the flexibility to pivot. We know things are going to be unforeseen, needs are going to need to be met, and if it's an opportunity to do so, that priority line really allows us, what it does is, we understand inflation is a consideration, we want to kind of draw a line that these are our projects we really want to get done. And then here's kind of that open for opportunity projects, and that line for the last project that we plan on getting done may go up and it may go down based off cost, based off need as we progress through the program.
At this point in time, has the survey that's come back from the citizens aligned with the priorities?
On the priority two, priority three, and priority four, yep. So what we identified through a needs, the needs assessments that the city's been working on for years, and while it's kind of listening to your staff, they've done a great job of understanding probably where the projects were going to come in, and those two are aligning pretty fairly well. Yeah, I think, I think I've been, it didn't state, we were about, almost 100 responses that have come in to date, and we'll continue to monitor that at April 4th. And again, this is an opportunity for people to listen in to what we're identifying, maybe provide some more clarity, so we'd expect and hope that there's more responses that would come in after tonight's meeting, and something that we've seen historically with some of our other American Rescue Plan operations. On this slide, really just kind of wanted to contextualize, you know, what some of these things mean. If you look at streets business and corridor improvements, right now, that's making up 54% of the allocation from a budgetary standpoint, but there can obviously be questions, what does that mean? So we've wanted to highlight a few of the key main investments as stormwater, streets business corridors, and then the economic recovery opportunities, and then some of the larger projects that are allocated under those umbrellas. So if we just look at stormwater, for example, you know, the Kaiser Stormwater Grant match would be a project that is matched under stormwater. So if you're going through the budget challenge, again, just wanted to provide an opportunity to kind of draw the correlation between what stormwater is and what's one of the priority projects that we've identified. So forth was the street business corridors with downtown Adams and downtown North Washington, and then lastly there, with the economic recovery opportunities, our small business grants and nonprofit grants, as well as the wage boost program. Any questions on that slide as far as this kind of, the allocation breakdown of the investment by category or some of the larger project investments?
Where does lost revenue fall under on this pie?
Well, yep, great question. So lost revenue, it'll actually be clarified on a later slide from a correlation standpoint. I can jump to it right now if you want me to.
No, that's fine.
Okay. So one of the key considerations, you know, we all probably sit on way too many webinars these days in general, but the American Rescue Plan is no stranger to webinars and understanding what the U.S. Treasury is trying to get across when it comes to the final rule, is we hear the word clawback used very frequently, right? We're now seeing a lot of articles coming out when it comes to clawback from the CARES Act. Folks who maybe who had expended funds are now on the hook for repayment because it wasn't in compliance with the CARES Act. And so one of the key foundations and exercises that we've gone through with the city staff is to identify all of our projects and then assign them a compliance score. And so what we've done is we've created a model that reflects what the U.S. Treasury has stated that gives a one through five score to every project. And those key categories are that are weighted are the ARPA eligibility score. So when you're looking at the allowable uses of the American Rescue Plan, how many of those boxes can we check based off the given project that we want to accomplish? There's a perception score. That's an opportunity for us to realize the community investment. So does this, is this a project that was going to create a high impact within our community? If it doesn't pass that test, then why are we doing? There's the expenditure category score. You know, again, when we're looking back from an audit standpoint, how many, how many of the boxes are we checking at? What's the compliance that's required to maintain and show that we're not at risk for a clawback? An example of that is some of our larger three, $4 million projects are going to require a much larger compliance investment strategy throughout the procurement and post-investment. As we know, we need to keep the records of these projects for five years. And then our financial score, again, larger projects are probably going to draw more eyeballs. So how do we go about maintaining the success and the compliance of those projects moving forward from an investment standpoint on the city's end? And then we got to acknowledge where our qualified census tracts are. So with that, I'll turn it over to Desi, kind of walk down the breakdown for the projects.
Good evening, everybody. So I'll talk through the results of the compliance analysis. And just piggybacking on what Corey said, you know, I think the importance of the compliance analysis first is to understand, these scores don't necessarily mean, especially if it's a higher score, it's a project that you can't do. I think it just tells us that there's some projects that may need a more rigorous or focused level of effort, especially when it comes to the monitoring and compliance efforts, and it just helps highlight and flag those. So on the slide, you'll see a graph here. On the left-hand side is the risk score. One is low, five is high. On the bottom, you see the dollar amount, and then the dots or the heat map there are the individual projects, programs prioritized by color. What you'll see is that most of these projects right now, based on those five compliance categories that Corey walked us through, they're falling right into that 2.2 to a 3 range, which is a low to moderate rating, which is good. I mean, that's a, that's a pretty average, middle-of-the-road score. There are only a couple that are above the 3.5 line, but again, that doesn't mean you can't do them, just highlights for us as a team, let's put some more focus, a little more effort into what the monitoring compliance framework is going to be for each one of those.
Is it possible to get an example of one of those too, that on the higher side?
Sure, yeah.
Just so we know what we're dealing with?
Yeah, so I think...
I think some of them are ones that we haven't assigned yet, so they really can't put it through the process.
Yeah, so some of the purple dots, did you want to mention something on this slide, Corey? Okay.
I was just going to remind you that I have also, I remember that the minimal on the low side here, four is on significant risk, but again, we have no five projects. And that one that we've eliminated the projects, those aren't being considered as part of the city council.
Yeah, so I mean, what I'm seeing here is, we have two projects that are above 3.5. I was just looking at an example of one, so I know what I'm looking at.
Yep, from memory, I believe those are some street skate projects, and I think they're falling on that higher side because there's a combination of the ARPA eligibility category that they're in that might have some stricter auditing or compliance associated with it, and the dollar amount's a little bit higher. You can see that they're 2 million to 3 million, and that actually is the kind of cutoff for our model where the risk or the compliance gets a higher score. But I believe those two dots up there are street skate projects. Next slide, please, Dave. On this slide, you'll see a summary of the priority one projects that the city's identified at this point. It's a fraction of the 68.7, you know, five overall allocation that the city is getting. But I think the nice thing to notice here first is there's a good diversification of projects within the different mission and vision statements that the city has created for this program. So it's not all being placed in one bucket. You'll see a good mix of street business corridor improvements, city asset reinvestments, economic recovery... You'll see a good mix of street business corridor improvements, city asset reinvestments, economic recovery, parks and rec, you know, all of that going into this priority one project list. I think a couple of other things to highlight on this list are, you'll see there's an asterisk, you know, one, two, or three next to certain projects or programs. Like Corey mentioned before, you know, leveraging alternative funding is something that we've been going through as part of this analysis with the city. I think at this point, they've identified nearly fifteen projects or programs that may qualify for some type of alternate funding, whether that be, you know, a grant, state, federal, whatever it might be. And a couple of them have actually secured some grant money. Some are just in that application phase. But it's just another step in the process of waiting and ranking these projects against one another and helping to prioritize them.
So when you say that some of these projects, the grants have been applied for them, if they're granted, maybe they have to be matched, or if they're fully funded, that money that was targeted for that will go somewhere else, a different priority, or no?
Correct. Yeah, short answer to that question, yes.
Okay.
And that's where, on behalf of the city, not to complicate this any further, you know, we were already-
No, I understand.
-in infrastructure, right? So what's a lower priority that, again, it's right above that line, it's a possible infrastructure act? It should maybe move down below that line if it's got an opportunity through other federal funding. Nothing, I didn't want to point out the sixteen-year question earlier, the provision of government services.
Could you, sorry?
The provision of government services on that first is where we've identified the budget opportunity for us to get that two-point-three million dollars for two thousand and twenty-two. So that's included in this priority and labeled under the provision of government services.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions on this slide?
Perfect. So we've kind of identified, to this point, what we're calling as Phase One. So the work that we've done to set up the program, identify key rules and responsibilities of the team, the thing I recapped on the slide earlier is Phase One. Our process now is to identify and enter into Phase Two. One of the key things that I wanted to note on is that, you know, we would be bringing back a thorough projects list for the City of Council's consideration. That would include not only the priority one projects, but the priority two, three, and four that demonstrates our allocation amount, knowing that it's a living, breathing document. The other area that we wanted to address was, it was actually a question that I got asked at the last board meeting was, you know, what are we doing from a city and staffing standpoint and other areas? And I will say, it's also an answer question because we now have a dedicated American Rescue Plan team that only focuses on this work. We've seen an investment from a statement or scope of work, job responsibilities, dedicated roles to the American Rescue Plan team. So as part of our Phase Two, one of the first recommendations is for the city to allocate those roles and responsibilities so that we have clear direction moving forward, recognizing that when we have almost seventy million dollars to spend, there needs to be clear communicative processes for us to handle that amount of responsibility. So identifying who can accommodate what within our existing infrastructure and what cannot be accommodated through our existing infrastructure from a city staffing perspective. We also want to designate and set up our processes for intakes from our beneficiaries and subrecipients, so identify the social programs, what those missions are going to accomplish from helping our community members from a subrecipient or beneficiary standpoint, and then go enter through the program design for any of our key infrastructure projects that we don't have those details out and really start the procurement process from a permitting and construction standpoint. So those are kind of a couple of key markers for Phase Two. And again, that would start with us coming back within the, with the projects list for the, in an April board meeting. Anything else here?
Just going to note at this point, I think this concluded the prepared remarks that we had. Didn't know if you had any other questions of us, we'd be happy to answer.
I think it's important to note that prior to us meeting here publicly, we had the opportunity to meet with you individually through Zoom with the mayor and Eileen there, too. So if there's not a ton of questions tonight, I would probably say it had to do with the fact that we've all had the opportunity to ask some good, hard questions when we met with you as well. But, thank you.
Thank you. And I agree, I think collaboration's going to be key as we go into Phase Two because I think now as Phase Two starts to evolve and roles, responsibilities are identified and formalized, I think it'll make it easier for everyone going forward to collaborate because it will be a heavy lift getting these projects completed by two thousand and twenty-six. And there's a lot of work that needs to be done to make sure that the city stays in those guardrails, as Corey talked about, and to minimize any potential clawback in future years.
You mentioned earlier, as we're building this plan, there's going to be probably opportunities for infrastructure, further infrastructure funding coming in. So we'll be able to, even though we may develop a plan, a spending plan, we'll be able to adjust as that funding comes out. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, I would say it's definitely fair to say. Like I said, our opportunity through board briefs or being here before you, whether it be for the budgetary reasons or change in plans, we're continually to evaluate. As I said, part of our opportunity as the city's advisor is to look for those opportunities, and we're proactively doing so. A month with Eileen does a great job of that as well.
Good, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Just a couple of comments. Much of this was helpful for us to see during our meeting, but I'm glad the public gets to see it now as well and to be able to, for you to come here and provide the updates. So I appreciate that. It's great to hear that we're actually ahead of the game in something. I think that's a really good point for the city and especially when the public is wondering what's going on with the funds. Have we allocated them yet? What do we plan on doing with them? And I'm glad to see we're putting the processes in place to make sure that we do this right, not quick, and that we're on target with where we need to be. Because we certainly don't want to miss out on these, but we don't want to be stuck owing the federal government this money back either. So I feel confident that we'll be in a good place with these funds and excited to see more about the plans and to continue the discussions. Thank you.
No, we appreciate it. And like I said, you know, we've had to sit and we'll continue to stress urgency throughout this program because it's necessary. But this is, we're in different positions with different clients where we've had to have a lot more uncomfortable conversations sitting here before you all. So it's not just telling you that you're doing good to tell you that you're doing good. It's not always the case.
One more question. So back on the page where it says priority one project summary, the list of projects that are listed, they're not listed by order of priority, are they?
Correct, they're not. This is just the bucket that is in priority one. Our opportunity now is, we have, you know, you've seen in reference capital improvement plans in the past, is for us to establish a capital improvement canon case study for all these projects that have procurement timelines, identification of goods and staffing. Again, we're pushing a lot of money through the procurement department, through the city. That's going to test us. And so having, again, every project stepped out and calendared out is part of what is developed once we've gotten the blessing on the projects list.
Thank you.
So from the scatter plot here, it seems like the compliance and risk analysis has been completed by your group?
It has been. I will, one thing I do want to note real quick is that not, projects don't cost nothing on that far-left-hand side if we don't have a cost on it, that it's yet to be determined that lives on that X, Y, X-F, sorry, for cost. But for everything, and we'll continue to update that. And again, we may get ideas through the budget challenge that may need to be added, and we'll continually evolve with the compliance score.
With that being said, when will we get an actual list or a breakdown of the actual projects that are being done based upon compliance, risk, et cetera?
Yeah, so great question. So when you adopt, when we get the complete projects list, there will be a full exhibit that demonstrates the methodology, the complete methodology, the weighted scores, the considerations. And then if there are any, for lack of better words, challenge points when it comes to the optics of a score, like we said, it's easy to look at, you know, that area. I didn't want to put it in a red box, right? Because it doesn't mean that necessarily we're doing something that's outside of the ARP eligible use. It just means we need to be prepared for the compliance side, right? That could be someone's full-time job, making sure the auditing and construction process is going well, is identify, and I lost my turnstot perfect, is on that exhibit, we'll have a complete briefing on all of the projects.
And then you did mention about staffing. Does the city have the correct staffing, the right amount of members here? Are you going to suggest that we may need more staffing to carry this out?
So one of the things that I think the city has done well is dedicated existing resources to manage this heavy lift. I think there's opportunities as the program develops for administrative funding. That's why the ARP eligible uses is for administrative provisions, is to bring on temporary staffing, or not temporary, but staffing that is for the duration of this program to accommodate needs. Obviously, the city has answer in place to support on some of that. But some of the ownership, we will even admit ourselves, probably is better lied within in the city's four walls.
And then, I know the bridges here, the Ash Street Bridge, for example, these are things that, they're listed as non-ARP. Are we using any funding for these bridge projects?
So on the bridge projects-
Okay. And I know there's certain other, I mean, when I think of infrastructure, I think of roads, bridges, et cetera. And I know sometimes the city has to do a match. One bridge in particular that I think of is the bridge, the railway bridge at Euclid Avenue and Main Avenue. I mean, this is a bridge that I've gotten many complaints about over the years. I mean, the visual look of the bridge is, seems to be deteriorating. Is this anything that we've ever taken a look at to see if we need to do a match, or if this type of funding can be used?
This particular funding, you know, funding would not be in eligible use for that, but as Corey pointed out-
Eileen, would you just be able to use the mic?
Oh, sorry, my bad.
We're working on getting that issue fixed.
I'm just going to yell. So this particular pot of funding would not be in eligible use for those bridge projects, but the infrastructure bill that Corey and Dave had referred, referenced when the final rule is coming out of that, that is an eligible funding source. So we will be looking at that when the final rule is complete.
So that would be the second tranche of-
No, no, not the second tranche. That's a totally another bill that was funded.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Thank you so much for taking the time to give us this presentation.
Thanks, folks.
We'll look forward to seeing you in another month or so.
Thank you.
Thank you.